The PCOsen City Council meeting is called to order. It's very encouraging to see a good crowd tonight, we do appreciate that. If we could all please rise, Vice Mayor Bunting will lead us in the invocation and pleasure of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we enter your courts with praise and thanksgiving, for you are worthy of our praise and our thanks. Grant us wisdom, guidance, and courage as we endeavor to conduct the business set before us this evening. We always say and do bring glory to you. Help each of us be respectful concerning views of others and have a kind spirit as we serve. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus, amen. I will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Debbie.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is Item C. We have an audience for visitors, so we'll open the floor for public comment related to city matters. We have two speakers tonight, Mr. Robert Small and Ms. Kim Shaw. Both are here to discuss the pickleball conditional use permit. And like we had done before, just to provide some context, this topic has been discussed during multiple work sessions, multiple public hearings between the planning commission and council. It's been on the agenda on numerous occasions over the past several months. So I would respectfully request if the comments could be limited to new information and would also request that please be thoughtful and considerate of others. So, thank you. And with that, I'll call Mr. Robert Small. Mr. Small?
Good evening Mayor, I'm here at PCOsen, thank you for your time and consideration for this matter. I wanted to address a couple of items that came up during the work session a little more thoroughly after I had time to think about them. One of the things that came up at this work session was a comment about our Christmas lights every year and how they would be up for a month at a time. And I want to say we've never had any complaints until the Shaws wanted a pickleball court. The first time this ever came up was when Mrs. Shaw met with the Perez's after Mr. Perez changed his mind and she brought it up with me. Until then, no one ever complained about the lights, no one ever complained about the traffic, no one had ever complained about anything. And the lights are up for public enjoyment, they're not there for private use. But what I want to say to City Council tonight, after talking with my mother at length, we feel so strongly that the pickleball court on the Shaw property would be the wrong thing at the wrong time, that we would like a sense of City Council, we will stop decorating at Christmas and only put lights on the house and some of the bushes in order to show you all how strongly we feel that allowing the Shaws to have a pickleball court on their property in close proximity to my mother and the Perez's is a huge mistake. So the next thing is the Toys for Tots party came up. And I wanted to address that a little more thoroughly because I found that interesting. We have not done the Toys for Tots party since the December of 2000, we didn't do it as of December 2013 because my mother was finishing her chemo in December for stage four ovarian cancer. Thank God it was successful, but we didn't want her exposed to lots of people when she was immune deficient. So that hasn't been an issue for 12 years. Again, the entire time we did that party, we never had anybody complaining. We never had anybody on city staff or city council complaining. We never had the police come by and tell us we had to break it up. The reality of the situation is again, that was for the public. That was to raise toys for underprivileged children and to honor the Marine Corps. My dad was in the Army, but as he said, they came up with the idea, not us. So again, I don't see a connection. But I do find it odd that Mrs. Shaw brought that up during our meeting with the Perez's as well. It was kind of a hint and frankly, I took it very badly. Because what it seemed to be saying was, if you're going to have your party, we're going to have our pickleball court. Or if you're going to have your lights, we're going to have our pickleball court. So the reality is, if City Council thinks that there's a relation between those two, I would like to be notified by you, Mr. Mayor, and we will cease and desist the lights as long as you go along with us and disapprove this tonight. You have all four neighbors on Rochambeau Drive saying no. You have the planning commission saying no. And I sent a new letter into each of you last Friday from Neil Rosenbaum, who's a realtor with 49 years of experience. And he ends his letter by basically telling you, this is a mistake. It's not good for the adjacent properties or the neighborhood. It changes the character of the neighborhood. I also submitted tonight a photograph because I wanted to have you again look at this and realize that the pickleball court on the Shaw property, as they want to put it in, is being put closest to the Perez's as it can get most likely and closest to my mother. Their property goes far to the other side, but they're not putting the pickleball court in front of their home directly. They're putting it in their front yard where it's going to impact the neighbors more than I listened intently to your comments during the work session and what came to me was, what the Shaws have asked to do here is to get a want. They want a pickleball court and let's face it, this photograph shows, no matter how you slice it, it's in their front yard. It may be off to the side a little bit, but it's in their front yard. But they want a pickleball court. They admit they play pickleball in York County now. They have other facilities to go to that do not affect Rochambeau Drive neighbors. My mother doesn't want a pickleball court. The Perez's, the Ireland's, and the Smiths, and Mr. Smith is here, the Perez's couldn't be here tonight, they're in Florida, my mother wasn't feeling well, so I didn't bring her. And Mr. Mayor, you commented on the fact that like people haven't come and talked to you. And I did reach out to you last week and I was directed to Mr. Moore's office and unfortunately, I assumed they were busy because I never got a call back from Mr. Moore.
That's because your answering machine was booked up and wouldn't accept my message.
Understood. And the bottom line is that what I would ask you to consider is that why is the want of the Shaws, the pickleball court, balance greater to all of you than the, I don't want, I don't want, of the other four neighbors on Rochambeau Drive? Why is my mother's desire to keep things as they ought and such a recolleged neighborhood less important than the Shaws wanting to put in the pickleball court? I think if you balance it out in fairness, you've got four neighbors saying no that should lean in their favor than the Shaws' favor. I would ask you tonight, to those of you who were leaning in favor of the pickleball court approval at the last meeting of the work session, I would ask you to reconsider your views. Because I don't believe that that leans in the right direction for the neighborhood. I also would urge you to consider the precedent you may be setting. Because if you approve this pickleball court in this front yard, the next person in PCOsen that wants to put one in their front yard is going to use this as a precedent for doing so. And I understand the Shaws would love to have a pickleball court in their front yard, but let's face it, according to your ordinance, it's for private use. Well, if it's for private use, they're already going, it's said they're going to bring people from York County into play, so it's not really for private use. And what is private use anyway? The last thing I would say is that some of you said you had visited the Shaws and they played pickleball on their drive and you just didn't think it was that noisy. If I'm trying to prove, to get a pickleball court approved, I'm not going to play pickleball as loud as I could. Trying to prove to you makes no noise. And the Shaws seem to want everyone to believe that this pickleball court will not be a noise generator. All the literature that I've given you says otherwise. And the literature I've given you is objective, it's not subjective. So with all due respect, I think that my mother, the Perez's, the Ireland's, and the Smiths, all deserve to be treated equally with the Shaws. And if they are treated equally, four against one should carry the day. And I thank you all, and I genuinely thank you all. I apologize to Mr. Moore if my voicemail was full, but I didn't see a note, it didn't come up in my phone that he had called. But in any event, you guys have put a lot of effort into this and even though, I'm hoping you'll agree with me tonight and vote to disapprove it, I don't want to, I want to thank you all for the time you have. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Small. Ms. Small?
Yeah.
It's improper for me to have a response, okay? But I'm going to have one anyway, okay? I personally see no connection between your Christmas lights and the Shaws' wants, okay? I do, I have a want myself. I want you to keep those Christmas lights, they're beautiful.
Thanks. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Shaw.
So hello again. On behalf of Greg and myself, we again want to express our appreciation for all the time and effort that's been spent to give a thoughtful vote on our request for a CUP. We didn't want to use any time tonight to belabor any of the points that have been previously opposed or previously presented. However, I do need to address what Mr. Small said tonight. We've spent six or more months watching as our actions and our words have been spun in a way that doesn't accurately reflect what was said or was done. My husband was characterized as selfish, conversations were characterized as confrontations. And tonight, a neighbor gathering where I was trying to explain to Mr. Small that neighbors tolerate each other, that's what we do. We tolerate the lights that go up every year, we tolerate not being able to get to our home because of traffic. We tolerated our mailbox getting run over three times and a break in our septic line that we repaired ourselves. And we never said a word. And I used that as an example to him of what good neighbors do. They don't complain about things that come as being a part of a neighborhood. So, you know, if you want silence and you want no one around you, you're living in the wrong place. So I just wanted to clarify that, I did not complain. I am not asking for the lights to stop, nobody's asking for that. And so I just wanted to make that point. When you talk about the neighbors that said no, Mrs. Small's property intersects our property in a single point. The Ireland's and the Smiths don't come anywhere near our property. So when Greg and I sought support or lack of opposition for our project, we stopped with the neighbors that order our property. We could have gone down Jefferson Court and further down Valmore Drive and gotten all kinds of people to say, yes, we support you. But when you don't order the property and you're never going to hear it, it's kind of irrelevant that you say no. So, my opinion. Anyway, the reason I wanted to speak tonight was because at the work session, there was a point brought up that nobody supported us in this request. We showed that on, at the very beginning, there was no opposition and Mr. Small turned some of the neighbors, well, turned one of the key neighbors around, Mr. Perez, with some of the information that isn't entirely accurate. And then went down, further down Rochambeau, further away from our home to get more people to oppose us. The Mercers and the Dickersons both signed that they do not oppose it and they're actually the neighbors that are more exposed to our property where we want to put the pickleball court. So Johnny Mercer's here tonight to express his support for us, he's happy to speak to that. Joy and John Dickerson were unable to come tonight and so they wrote a letter for you. I don't know if I'm permitted to pass that out. So just wanted to bring that up, that we do have support from neighbors. And one final point, it is a want. We recognize it's a want. It's a want that's going to cost us and a want that we hope to enjoy with our friends and family. And honestly, that's why people buy property and don't rent property, so that they can do the things that they want with their family and build areas to play together. So that's all I have for you tonight. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Do we have any other speakers tonight? Very well. We will close the audience for visitors and move on to Item D. Special presentations, we have two tonight, and I am sure the presentations will be both informative as well as entertaining. So tonight, we'd like to welcome Ms. Robin Woolsey. She is a conservation specialist too with the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District. So we're very pleased to have you with us, Ms. Woolsey. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you so much, council members, city staff. Thank you all for your time tonight. I'm Robin Woolsey. Like Mayor Hux said, I work for the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District based out of Williamsburg. And I am here tonight to talk to you about the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program, or VCAP. This program is newly available to landowners within the city of PCOsen. Much thanks to you all and city staff for entering into this partnership with us to
Give us one second.
Sure. I can go ahead and jump into some of the background about the program. VCAP has been around for about 10 years now. VCAP has been around for about 10 years now. It is administered by Soil and Water Conservation Districts. And so with a lot of cities and independent cities in Hampton Roads not being a part of a Soil and Water Conservation District, we've taken a lot of steps over the past couple of years to enter into partnerships with these localities to make this program available because it is such an asset for a lot of private landowners. And so the program itself is a financial cost share program. It provides funding assistance for the installation of best management practices, or BMPs. Those practices are meant to address issues with stormwater. So most often that means erosion, bare soil, excess runoff, and standing water. All those different kinds of things are what we help to address through this program. And so in terms of eligibility, most of our work happens with private residents, private homeowners, but we're also able to work with churches, schools, businesses, localities for public lands, public parks, things like that. And, but like I said, most of the time, we work with private homeowners. Oh, thank you. And so in terms of eligibility for the program, those are the folks we work with most often. VCAP is a retroactive program, so we have to prove that there's an existing issue, like some of those resource concerns I just listed. This means quite frequently that we're not able to work with new construction, but there are some caveats around that. And the last little eligibility component is that state and federally owned lands are not eligible. So like I said, there are 12 different practices that are eligible for funding. Do you all have a copy of this? Okay, wonderful. So you can see what I see. So conservation landscaping, rain gardens, permeable pavement, and living shorelines are the ones that we see the most interest in throughout our service area, which covers all of Hampton Roads and the Middle Peninsula. And so I'll talk a little bit more about some of these in depth in just a minute, but those are the ones we see the most interest in. And particularly with living shorelines having so much water, so much tidal shorefront, we've really been able to sort of build a niche for ourselves in that, in that area of conservation. And so just to dive in a little bit about some of these practices, like I mentioned, permeable pavement is one of the ones that's most popular. Most folks will apply for this practice to replace a driveway, build a patio, or really address those sort of hardscape projects. And so permeable pavement, this picture that you have here is a driveway in James City County that we were able to help fund. It was a conversion from aggregate into this permeable surface. From the surface, it looks like a traditional paver. The really unique and interesting and functional part of it is actually beneath that surface there. When these systems are installed, they're generally excavated about a foot underneath that footprint and then filled with stone. And so in this picture, you can see there, there are some spaces in between each paver. That means that when water flows or falls onto that surface, it finds those spaces and sinks into that gravel or that rock below. This reduces the amount of water coming off of that surface and reduces the potential for downstream erosion, downstream flooding. So this has been a really successful and popular practice. The next one, like I mentioned, is conservation landscaping. That is the use of native plants to help hold soil in place and prevent soil loss, prevent erosion. This is a little before and after picture where we had a landowner also in the Williamsburg region, he had a lot of area to have to manage, very steeply sloped around this cul-de-sac, and he was successful in applying for conservation landscaping funding to plant that whole area with native plants and help hold that soil in place. And then the last one, like I mentioned, living shorelines are something that we work with quite frequently throughout the tidal region. We've had a lot of success helping landowners address their shoreline erosion issues. Living shorelines briefly are meant to mimic a natural marsh, and so there are different components of that practice that are installed to help address current erosion and prevent that erosion from getting worse while creating a really unique and beneficial marsh habitat for a lot of different species. So the application process, anytime a landowner is interested in this program or has an issue, a stormwater issue that they're not quite sure how to deal with, we encourage them to reach out to our office. I also have a coworker who works on this program full-time, so they can contact her, her name is Emma, or me to set up a site visit. We'll come out to the property totally for free and take a look at what's going on and see if we can come up with some solutions that would fall within this program. If that, if we're able to do that, and the landowner wants to proceed with an application, we'll work with them throughout that process, all the way through submitting that application to be reviewed and approved. My board of directors at the district board, as well as the VCAP steering committee, which is a statewide body, both have to approve before any work begins. But that's generally a pretty quick turnaround to get folks submitted, approved, and then they can begin construction. And so we work with them throughout that process just to keep everything on track and make sure that they have everything that they need to get that funding. Moving on to the table you'll see is our current cost share rates for fiscal year 2026. Couple of things to keep in mind, this is a state-funded program, so all of our payments greater than $600 are considered taxable income. So that's a big thing for landowners who want to apply to keep in mind. We do have the option now, if the landowner applies or works with a contractor, we can pay their contractor directly, and that reduces the tax burden on the landowner. And we also have the option now to provide 50% of their cost share funding upfront, which can help cover deposits, materials, things like that. And so in the table, we won't go through all of these, but you'll see some of our practices have a variable lifespan. We'll talk about that in a minute and what that means. But for the most part, there is a payment rate, generally 80% of the total cost, and a payment cap. So conservation landscaping, we can provide up to $7,000 to offset that installation cost. Permeable pavement, we can provide up to $20,000, and living shorelines, we can provide up to $30,000. And so that can make a pretty big dent in the cost of some of those installations. And so I mentioned the lifespan. All of our practices have some commitment to maintenance. And so some of the practices, some of the less intensive, smaller options have, or smaller installations have the option of a five-year lifespan in which the landowner, the applicant agrees to maintain that practice for five years. They get a lower cost share rate, but it's a shorter amount of time that they're on the hook essentially for maintaining that practice. Otherwise, everything defaults to a 10-year lifespan. So we do have procedures in place to assist that landowner with transferring that maintenance responsibility if they move or sell the property. But we always make folks aware that this is a long-term commitment, and there are going to be expectations that that practice is maintained. And so there will be inspections throughout that period. They're never a surprise. We always let folks know that we're coming, and we're always available to answer questions or address issues that may arise outside of those inspections. If we do find that a BMP is removed or it's not maintained to the point that it doesn't function, that there may be an opportunity or requirement to repay some of their initial cost share. We always work through folks to try and avoid that, work with folks to try and avoid that as much as possible. So that is a very brief, quick overview of the program. Again, I wanted to say thank you all for your time tonight. My contact information is here, it's also on the district's website, and we'll be looking forward to working with a lot of Pecosin landowners soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woolsey. Do we have any questions or comments from council members? Mr. Freeman?
Could you briefly address what bio-retention?
Yeah, bio-retention for us is just a really big rain garden. So it's a landscape feature that's meant to take in a lot of runoff from a large area and then use native plants to help soak up some of that water and give it a chance to infiltrate instead of just sending it down the storm drain.
Sort of like a water garden thing.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. Just big.
Is this the only kind of permeable surface I'd heard of one time? Asphalt? Or no, is it?
Yeah, there are permeable asphalt's available. There are also, I'm sure you've seen the pavers that kind of come in a diamond or a grid pattern that have grass growing in between them, but those are also considered permeable. There are some sort of plastic honeycomb-shaped products that are also available. So there's, there's different kinds. The interlocking grid that you see in the photo is just the most popular. All of them eligible for the program.
Anything else from council members?
Okay.
Woolsey, thank you again. Appreciate you being with us.
And members of council, we'll make sure for our audience that we're watching at home, we're going to go ahead and put the slides on the top of our website. We apologize to Robyn, we had a technical difficulty, but we wanted to make the information available to our citizens.
Thank you, Tanya. And our next special presentation will be presented by our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Tanya O'Connell, and this is related to our 50th anniversary as a city.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, I wanted to first thank city council and the city manager for support, for allowing us to do the kickoff. We've already had our first shop and dine event. It was very successful. Because of popular demand of our tumblers, we brought it back. So first of all, what I want to show you is a couple of things that we've done around town. So at our welcome signs, we put the banner, the 50th banner on there, as well as our vehicles has an indication of the 50th anniversary. And then our Pecosin is a place sign that everybody has fallen in love with, that we're able to maintain with. We actually have a sign up there as well. But again, we just want to make sure our citizens know that this is 50 years, that we've actually been a city, and that we want to recognize our celebration all year long. So with that, we've come up with our next shop and dine event in September. We've asked patrons to go to two local establishments, get $125 in receipts, to get yet again the tumbler. They can go to either the city manager's office or Parks and Rec, because we have found it was a little difficult for some people to come to the second floor because they didn't know we exist. So for those who are watching and listening, there is a second floor on City Hall, and we do exist upstairs. But to make it easier for all, we have both locations set up, so if they were comfortable going to Parks and Rec, they still can. One of the things that we're going to be doing is if you spend $25 at Pecosin Gift, Pat Pecosin, Beechey Bull, or Early Birds, you're going to be entered in for a drawing for a very special general parking pass for the three-day seafood festival, which is October 17th, 18th, 19th, in honor of Dave Callis. I have to make sure we know those dates. But again, we want our patrons to get out, support local, come see us for a tumbler, and be entered into a drawing to pass to park at the seafood festival every single day that you need to. Other than how quickly you are going to go get your receipts?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd also like to recognize a special person that is on staff here with us in the city. Her name is Ms. Ashley Chica. She is our executive assistant as well as our deputy city clerk. And Tanya, if you could back up one slide, I'd like to call your attention, please, to our 50th anniversary logo. That was a product of Ashley's creativity and artistic abilities, and I'm confident that that'll go down in the history of the city of Pecosin. And for example, I'll use our very popular city seal that's been in use for almost 50 years. Ms. Peggy Moore, who was my neighbor from two houses down the road back in the 70s when I grew up on Alpha Street, she actually won a competition to design our city seal. And I don't think I'm biased when I say it's, it's the most beautiful city seal that I've ever seen, and I think it is the most descriptive as well. At first glance, looking at our city seal, you know what our heritage is, and it gives you a real good idea of what our city's all about. And I'm confident that when the citizens of Pecosin celebrate our 100th anniversary, that they'll make good use of this 50th anniversary logo by Ms. Ashley Chica. So Ashley, thank you so much. And Ashley maintains the minutes for us, which is a hard job, especially when we have a busy agenda like tonight. So Ashley, thank you for your contributions as well. And she follows a very long line of fine ladies over the years. Her most recent predecessor was Ms. Christie Snap, who is now our city clerk. So they contribute mightily. Thank you so much.
Tanya, thank you for your help with this. Anything else that you have for us?
No, just please go out and support local.
Thank you very much. E on the agenda, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special session of July 28th, 2025?
So moved.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Christie, call for a vote, please.
Councilman Freeman? Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to...
Thank you, Christie. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special session of July 31st, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Christie.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to...
Thank you, Christie. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, and at this time, we will open the public hearing. We have for us tonight an ordinance to consider. This ordinance is for approval of the amendment to Article 1, Section 1-7 of the City of Pecosin Code of Ordinances, zoning ordinance appendix A, conditional use permits. And with us tonight, we have Mr. Wiley Horton, who is our Director of Community Development. Welcome, Wiley. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. We do have some amendments for your review tonight to do with conditional use permits. And you set it up so well, Mr. Mayor, that I'll just kind of jump into it. Proposed amendment for conditional use permits, this is section 1-7. All of this is section 1-7, it's kind of broken up into three parts, A, B, and C. Basically, preamble here, the city council, of course, is aware that we've had some detailed conditional use permits of late, one of which you're talking about tonight, and another one you'll be talking about in November. Given that some of the information, particularly on the one that's not here tonight, has required some additional material, we thought this was an excellent opportunity to introduce that into our code as something that we can use going forward. And, and, you know, basically, all this required material would be submitted before it's scheduled for public hearings. So it'd be before the planning commission or before the city council meeting. And I'll touch on that a little bit as we, as we move on. This was legally advertised July 7th, July 14th for the planning commission meeting, and Monday, July 28th, and August 4th, 2025 for the city council. Okay, so let's, we'll break down this ordinance, and by the way, this is all included in your resolution. But, "application for a use not specifically permitted," I've got to point out that that underlying is mine. It'll be removed in the zoning ordinance. "If within a particular zoning district established under this ordinance, a use is not specifically permitted, and an application for a minor conditional use permit is made by a property owner to the zoning administrator for the use, the zoning administrator will refer the application to the planning commission, which will make its regulations to the city council. Major conditional use permit shall only be applied for any commercial districts in accordance with the section." And I'll kind of break down what those, those commercial districts are. They'll basically be 1, B2, general commercial, village commercial, and research and development. So those are the districts that we're talking about. "An application shall not be made if the use is explicitly forbidden," that is unchanged, "in the district for which a use is proposed." And as far as overlay districts, we have one now, "but unless enabled at the time of master plan approval, application for a conditional use permit in the overlay district shall not be allowed." I think in my haste, I might have missed a part here in the blue in Midway Down, with the exception of a property where a conditional use permit has been granted in the past. This is sort of a, I mean, it'd still be referenced as a minor or major, but this is for our existing conditional use permits that have already been approved to continue to operate within the zoning ordinance. So what this would do, among other things, is eliminate... So what this would do, among other things, is eliminate new and larger non-residential uses in residential areas in terms of scale and impacts. And I'll get to those in a second. This would allow for some commercial use in non-commercial districts unless the requirement for major CUPs were triggered by Section 1-7A. Minor CUPs would still be eligible for a CUP application in residential districts. "Conditional use permits shall be considered as either minor or major." I think I've already said that. The difference being generally that a major conditional use permit involves a new principal commercial building to be constructed and/or required submittal of a conceptual plan, including but not limited to all of the following: ingress, egress, property lines, building orientation and dimensions inclusive of all phases, the parking lot landscaping, and locations of stormwater best management practices. Now, we're not requiring an engineered stormwater best management practice at this point. We're just kind of making sure that that's been factored into the overall mix. When we get to site plan, we have more to do with the actual location, and Sean does good work with evaluating that. "Conditional use permits shall," well, that's the same thing. This is just continued. "Required approval by the Architectural Review Board, ARB, for a new building or an exterior refurbishment of an existing building and/or a traffic study required by 1-7C of this ordinance, or and/or unique impact concerning noise, dust, and/or odor requiring certified professional assessment and/or environmental concerns as determined by the zoning administrator." An example of this would be noise, you know, for gun range, or whatever it might be. Excessive dust or excessive odor. These would be things that would need to be analyzed. So in effect, what this does is separate CUPs as major-minor depending on requirements for the contemplated use, and aids the applicant in knowing what is required of a particular proposal. I mean, oftentimes, an applicant doesn't understand everything that's going to be required, and this allows us the opportunity to explain that to the applicant. Okay, we move down to 17B, subsection 1. This is an important one. "Application for a conditional use permit as required by any provision of this ordinance shall be made to the City Council and filed with the zoning administrator. The application shall not be deemed as officially submitted by the zoning administrator until all required information is provided by the deadlines established for the submit of conditional permits." This is generally 30 to 35 days prior to the next planning commission meeting or hearing. "After the deadline is passed for the planning commission, additional or modified materials shall not be allowed. Should additional or modified materials be submitted to City Council, the application shall be remanded to the planning commission for recommendation prior to the additional or modified materials being considered by the City Council." What this basically means is it's not asking City Council to remand this. This is something that we will do at the staff level. If we see that additional materials have been submitted, and the planning commission has not had their opportunity to see that material, it will be forwarded back to the planning commission automatically, essentially. Once deemed officially submitted and not before, the application shall be advertised for public hearing before the planning commission in the manner prescribed by the city. So the effects here is it requires a complete application prior to advertisement for public hearings. It eliminates late submission of materials without adequate time for review, and provides due process for all materials to be factored prior to a recommendation or That's pretty much all I've got. I know that's a mouthful, so please, if you have questions,
Any questions or comments from council members? For Wiley?
That one, Wiley, just happens to be presented to us tonight. If this were in place prior to, let's say, Christmas of last year, would these two things have been permitted to be handed out to us tonight?
The pickleball court would still be a minor conditional use permit. The proposal for the gun range, which has currently been tabled till November, would be a major CUP, conditional use permit, and would have required all the information that I went over prior to it being considered by the planning commission or the City Council.
The answer is yes?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Yes.
From that far away, you name it, able to see these. Neither one of the exhibits the councilman showed you was provided by the applicant as a substantive addition, change, or modification. This was provided, well, actually, one was. One was a letter, and the other was provided by Mr. Small. It was a picture. I understand the ordinance, that would, neither one of these would trigger an automatic remanding back to the planning commission. Is that correct?
That is correct, although I would say a letter is almost like a substitute for a public hearing statement. So, I mean, I think a letter, you know, it sort of depends on what the letter is. If it's a letter just voicing support or non-support for something, I think we could probably allow that.
That's what it is in this particular case.
Yes.
Wiley, I have a question. You commented on, I think, the first slide, that there was something that wasn't the way it was supposed to be. Was that a material problem? I think, perhaps you commented that something wasn't indicated the way you wanted it to, or maybe I just misunderstood.
Well, we're talking about materials being submitted.
No, 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 no. I don't mean that kind of material. I meant, was there an error on this slide that you were correcting when you were reading it to us? Not that one. It was...
I believe.
I think it was the one with all the markouts, the blue.
Okay, let me...
That one.
With the red A.
Yeah, with the red A.
Yeah, I had omitted all of the part in blue halfway down where I said, "Major conditional use permit shall only be applied for in commercial districts." And I went ahead and listed what those were, but I didn't complete the sentence. "In accordance with this section, with the exception of a property where a conditional use permit has been granted in the past."
Okay.
That's what I omitted.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that would be different if we approved this as it was. But you explained it, so we're...
Right. And that language is included in your resolution.
Wiley, my question is, you deal with these things all the time, okay? In your opinion, do these change, will these changes help the flow of conditional use permits to make it smoother and easier for the applicants, so that we're not concerned that the city government's getting in the way of anything, but that it flows more smoothly and easily?
I think this will make the flow a lot better, because, as I pointed out earlier, it's going to let the applicant know the materials that they need in order to get a conditional use permit. Instead of, you know, having to delay several months and either having the planning commissioner or the City Council tell them they need to do this. I mean, we've told them in advance. We're not telling them at the tail end.
I'm all for streamlining government paperwork. Thank you.
So, Wiley, as an example, the conditional use permit that we approved, I think it was last year, the car maintenance facility off of Georgetown Road, that would no longer be allowed under the new ordinances, because they are looking at building a new building.
Well, they were looking to build a new building, so there'd be a major. And I can't remember right off what the zoning for that was.
It's residential.
I think it was residential.
It's residential.
No, it would not be allowed.
It would not be allowed as a conditional use permit. They could file a rezoning application. And if the rezoning application was successful to a zoning district in which that type of facility was allowed either by right or with a conditional use permit, the answer would be yes, by right, or the ability to put forward a CUP, subject to a successful rezoning.
And one more clarification. Properties, there's a mention of non, or I'm sorry, residential properties that had a conditional use permit previously. Is that any time in the past, or consecutive use?
Well, conditional use permits run with the land. So if we've issued one in the past, that would still be in effect. Now, you know, some examples, we were thinking about the 185 restaurants of the world, or the New River churches of the world, you know, places like that, where, you know, we'd want them to be able to continue that use. Now, of course, if they build a new building, they're going to be a major, and that would be a major that's allowed in a non-commercial district.
So even if the current conditional use permit had expired or lapsed, they would still be allowed?
Well, I know City Council does put time limits on a conditional use permit, and of course, we would respect that. But as a general rule, conditional use permits run with the land. In other words, if there's not a specific time that's listed by the City Council in their approval, then it's still valid.
Were you finished?
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you, Angie.
Yes, sir.
Keith? On the memo that you put in, Wiley, you have key principles down there. And I listened to your three May, June, and July planning commission statements. And kudos to everyone on the planning commission for getting through this and getting to us. A lot of hard work, and I appreciate it. I don't want to tip my hat as to how I'm going to vote. But one of the things it has in there is that cups must be evaluated under reasonable standards based on zoning principles.
Yes.
Got that from the Albemarle Land use handbook?
I did, indeed. Get it from the Albemarle Land use handbook. Very good.
Bring that up, because it may come up later on. I just wanted to know, are those standard principles, like statewide type, or?
They are standard principles, and they're written from a Virginia perspective. So yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Anything else from council members? Well done, Wiley. Thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. If we have anybody with us that would like to comment on this particular ordinance. Seeing none, we will close the floor. And I will ask for a motion in a sec.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve an ordinance approving amendments to Article 1, Section 1, Act 7 of the City of Picocin Code of Ordinances, zoning ordinance Appendix A, conditional use permits.
Christie, call for vote, please.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Christie. All right, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And we will move on to item G, unfinished business. For us tonight is a resolution to approve or deny a request for a conditional use permit application by Gregory Shaw, applicant-owner for the construction of a private pickleball court at 8 Rochambeau Drive, an approximate 1.42 acre parcel identified as tax map 11-01-00-0060-B, zoned RS, single-family residence. And I do have some comments that I'd like to share. And considering the sensitivity of this subject, I'll provide an opportunity for my fellow council members to share their thoughts as well, if they have any. Based on the comments that we heard during earlier office, audience visitors, I feel like I need to recap some of the thoughts that I shared during our work session just a few weeks ago. Not being a legal professional, my knowledge of the court system and how court cases work is very limited, but I do know just a little bit about how local government's supposed to work. And that process is for citizens to be able to communicate directly with their elected representatives. And I feel like the process was circumvented in this case. We've not heard directly from a single resident that opposed to it, and I would have certainly appreciated. It would have been great if we could have heard directly from citizens. But be that as it may, it's not how it happened. And also, know that we've talked about precedences. I hope this doesn't set a precedent moving forward in our otherwise close-knit community. I hope that citizens will always feel that they can contact their elected representatives at any time for anything related to the city. That's what we're here for. We're here to make the hard decisions. In this case, the council, planning commission, and staff has agonized over this. And this has been in play now for several months, going back almost to the first part of this year. And if you recall, during the July 14th work session, I spoke of my belief that the council could establish conditions to this conditional use permit that would serve as a compromise that all involved could live with. We understand that most likely, nobody's going to be 100% happy with it. But we're trying to find a way that everybody can live with it. And just by definition, a compromise, that means everybody's going to have to give a little, so everybody can get a little. And another thing that I talked about was, part of living in a neighborhood in a close-knit community is that we're patient with one another, and sometimes we tolerate those minor little irritations and inconvenience. But that's all part of, at least what I think, it means to be a good neighbor. Based on those previous discussions, council meetings and the work session that we recently had, council and staff has worked together. And we've also incorporated some of the considerations from the planning commission to come up with conditions. We've recently identified some additional conditions, as well as some modifications to those we discussed in the past, in hopes that we have truly incorporated concerns from all perspectives related to We could put that slide up on the screen. I would appreciate it. I'd like to thank staff for putting this slide together for us. And Christie also made hard copies. For anybody that's not able to see it on the screen, I'm sorry, the print's a little bit small. And council members also have a copy at the dais to read as well. And if need be, I'll be happy to read them if that would be helpful.
Tanya, I was trying to signal you, it would be good if we get all 10 conditions on the screen.
I was wondering, I was going to go either way. I had a 50/50 shot on that one.
Just scroll up a little bit. Just a titch. Well, you got to get two more in there, right?
Not in the cards for me tonight. Let me...
That's full screen. You're a teacher. Well, it's not going to get any, like...
I mean, if y'all would bear with me, I'll go ahead and read the conditions as well. The first six conditions in blue text, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit difficult to read. read, but the conditions in blue text, the first six, are the conditions as originally considered by the planning commission. Condition number one, plans for the site shall only be approved once all requirements of the city code are satisfied. Condition two, lighting for the court shall be affixed consistent with the plan shown in the application so that the light is concentrated to the court. No lighting shall spill over to adjacent properties. Condition three, the applicant shall maintain all existing trees, vegetation, as shown in the application and staff presentation. At such time, any existing tree or vegetation is removed. It shall be replaced in an effort to screen the use as required and determined appropriate by staff. Condition four, the court shall remain private in nature and shall not be used for charitable, commercial, or competition purposes. Condition five, the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. If at any time this use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies or the conditions listed herein, the city council may revoke this permit. Condition six, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. So those are the six conditions originally considered by the planning commission. And I'd like to recognize and thank the planning commission at this time. They've done their due diligence, not once but twice, based on council's request. We have great respect and appreciation for what the planning commission does for us. And as you can see, we're incorporating their input into this as well. And I've shared before, but just to repeat, I'm most of the way through my ninth year on council now. And council, best of my recollection during my time seated at the dais on council, is that if we vote in favor of the CUP tonight, it would be contrary to the planning commission's recommendation. And if we do that, it'll only mark the third time during my nine years on council that that has occurred. So it's pretty unusual. Most of the time, we do vote in accordance with them. And we very much appreciate what the planning commission does for us. All right, next condition is number seven, and you'll notice this is in purple text. And these are the conditions as considered by the planning commission during their reconsideration. The court shall be painted green grass with minimal contrast resembling grass from a Condition number eight, and in black text are the additions and modifications that resulted from discussions between council members on an individual basis and staff as well. Condition number eight, a minimum of seven needlepoint holly trees will be strategically placed in accordance with the exhibit provided by the applicant to further buffer noise and light, particularly for winter months. Originally, it wasn't quantified, so we felt like we need to do that. And from what I understand, the needlepoint holly trees should expand to at least 10 feet. So I'm seven, that's a pretty good screen. Condition number nine, the hours of use for the pickleball court shall be limited to between 8 a.m. and 8 p.m. daily. And one of the topics that I discussed during the work session, you know, life happens in neighborhoods during the day. Life makes sound. If sound becomes noise, we have existing noise ordinances to deal with that. One of the things that I hear fairly regularly flying over my house is the sound of freedom. And that's a welcome sound, and appreciate it. And I'm fortunate enough to be seated right here at the dais with two gentlemen that contributed to the sound of freedom earlier in their lives. So we thank them for that. But that's during the day. At night, I think it's totally reasonable that things be nice and peaceful and quiet. That's why we decided on limiting the time from 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. Try to be mindful of concerns of all involved. Item number 10, this conditional use permit shall be limited to the construction of a pickleball court and associated lighting, but shall not include construction of an observation deck. But the thinking there is we're trying to find a way to minimize the impact. Again, everybody gives a little, so everybody can give a little. And just to mention, I know Councilwoman Hubbard has a...
Has opinions.
Has a comment related to condition number 10. But that's what we've come up with to try to reach that compromise. And this time, I'd like to provide an opportunity for council members to make comments.
So, thank you. And, you know, I think that this document's been put together extremely well. I think that it clearly shows what the original intent of the planning commission was, the things that they reconsidered to demonstrate that they did reconsider when they sent it back. And then the things that number nine and 10 are reflected from our conversation in the work session, and the opinions and comments brought forth by these wonderful people that I work with, and, you know, both on staff and elected officials. I'm commenting specifically on number 10 with regard to number six. And I made no bones about it that I support the pickleball court in the last work session. Now, the conditional use permit, number 10, shall be limited to the construction of a pickleball court and associated lighting, but shall not include the construction of an observation deck. My objection to that was that I felt that the pickleball court will not be finished. And the observation deck was a small seating area that would make it look finished and enjoyable while not in competition, playing against someone you can sit and watch, whereas the driveway is crowned, right? Not exactly friendly to lawn chairs or other ways of sitting. It was just a small, it's not an observation deck, it's not bleachers, you know, no popcorn stands, no hot dogs, no cheerleaders, just a place for people to sit while the other people were playing, the other two people potentially. However, number six, which is one of our original conditions from the planning commission, says that city council reserves the right to review and amend the condition of this permit as they see fit. You are absolutely welcome to ask again in a year's time, in another year's time, to say, okay, we put it in, it's working great, Armageddon has not happened on our street, we would like you all to consider letting us put in an observation deck. And council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as... Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie. Appreciate that. Council members?
I could say a lot, but I've already said a lot. However, Jeanie, my impression is just like yours, this includes pickleball court and lighting, okay? And I do not believe it will impact the neighborhood at all. And if that proves the case, they can request change in the conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. Mr. Freeman?
I just wanted to say that I cannot see any circumstances ever where I'd be opposed to anybody putting up Christmas lights. And I wanted to make that clear. Nor toys for tots. I've been with civic organizations that have collected them and taken them to Mr. Small's father back in the past. And I can't see any way I would ever be opposed to that either. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I'll toss in one more comment. Mr. Small, if you want to move across the street from me and put those Christmas lights up, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to comment, because I'm the one who raised that. Remember, I'm the one who lives on the same, in the same neighborhood. I also remember in the early 80s, not early 80s, the early 90s, when the community was petitioning to have an HOA put in the area. And, yeah, no. And we don't live in an HOA, right? And I am the one who commented about the lights. I am the one who mentioned that it was a lot of traffic, that it's a lot of sound, it's a lot of everything. But we never complained because we liked it. My parents went to your dad's parties, you know? Those are wonderful, we're Navy. You know the Navy and the Army are the way they are. It was great. Loved those parties. Your folks are fantastic people, you and your brother, fantastic people. So I don't want anyone to leave here thinking, and I'm very, very sorry that you and your mom felt that that was an either/or situation. That has never been the implication. Do want to echo what was said a little while ago, because it's the same thing I said that evening when I got home, and I was like, oh, I wish I said. But that's, you know, people don't complain about those things because they are good and decent people. Those are your neighbors. We give each other grace.
Thank you, Jeanie. Keith?
Yes, I get a chance.
Yes, sir.
One thing I conferred with you and with city manager on was about the conditional use permit. Once given, it stays with the property. So it doesn't travel with the individual, it stays with the property. So in this particular case, any future landowner, like they sell the house, it would become their responsibility to maintain it and all this other stuff that's in this thing per the CUP, and that has to be obviously transferred to this. So some of those holly trees start wilting and dying, they have to be replaced by some future landowner. Hope that that landowner understands that. I mentioned, I was doing a playground safety inspection this past week, and Saturday morning I was over at the primary school checking out their playgrounds there, and I could, I don't know, Bud, I had no problem hearing pickleball being played on the public courts, which are just over the ball field and across the way. I mean, matter of fact, it kind of got me as I came around the building, going, I go, that's right, pickleball courts are right there. And that's a long way, it's a little close in this particular case here. And I'll bring up what I had just mentioned earlier, that Wally had brought to us, a key principle of a CUP is that the conditional use permit must be evaluated under reasonable standards based on zoning principles. And you get to do a lot of good work, work on that, on the thing we just passed. And I'm looking at the zoning principles in this particular case here. That's my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right, I'll say one more thing. I'll probably shut up.
I love the City Council, okay? And we work well together, okay? And as in the past, and as will continue after tonight, okay? No matter how we vote, okay? Those who vote like, vote the same way I vote, we'll, okay? The votes who vote a way that's different than mine, I'm going to love them anyway. Okay, so we get together, we agree to disagree, I'm glad we work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. Any other comments from council members? Well, y'all did remind me, I wanted to touch on a couple of other things. Conditional use permits, just by their nature, are not intended to set a precedence. They are dealt with on a case-by-case basis, depending on the particular circumstances and conditions specific to that CUP. So one way or the other, CUPs are not intended to set precedents. We do have that flexibility there. And we do have checks and balances in place, and I would call your attention again to item, I'm sorry, condition number five and six, that talks about the applicant must comply with all local, state, federal permits, licenses, regulations, that sort of thing. The city council may revoke this permit if something changes. And city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions as they see fit. If for some reason, pickleball court becomes a problem, we have provisions in place to deal with it. With that, since the Christmas lights came up, I'd like to share a story about that. It's good. We've been in this particular house at 21 Dorothy Drive, which is Councilman Fai, thank you, Keith, he measured it for me. We live 328 feet from the proposed location. And we've been in this house since 1998. So I know the Christmas light display goes back at least that far. But this particular event occurred during the Christmas season of 2000, and almost 25 years ago, but it made such a big impression on my two daughters, who were four and a half and three at the time, and then my wife and I as well, and we've not forgotten it. But this was before the Shaw's house was built. And our daughters got the biggest kick out of taking their flashlights and walking with us through the woods to the end of Rochambeau to enjoy the Christmas decorations. And this particular night, we did this a lot of times. We were standing out by the curb, and Mr. Small came out on the porch and saw us standing out there and invited us all in. Well, I'd just come from the shipyard, so I wasn't particularly presentable at the time, and certainly not dressed to be in anybody's house, but we were welcomed aside anyway. And our little girls, they thought that was great. They ran all over the house just like they owned it. And Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry, the Smalls were kind enough to show them their model trains. And again, to this day, they still remember, because it made such a positive impression. We'd never met the Smalls before. And another thing that sticks in my mind is your entire family was sitting around the dining room table, I think it was about 12 of y'all, and you invited us in and introduced us to everybody. And of course, my face was probably red as a beet just coming from work. But just, I wanted to recognize that and let you know that almost a quarter of a century later, we've not forgotten that. So the Christmas lights are certainly a big deal, a lot of people enjoy it, and so far as traffic and all, you know, again, that's just part of living in a neighborhood and just being neighborly, patient with one another, and tolerant as well. So those are all the comments that I have. And just, again, do council members have anything else? Well, thank you for everybody for your patience on this. We tried to do our due diligence. And hopefully, regardless of the outcome, I hope that we've made a good impression of the, on our constituents, the extent that we're willing to go to, to try to make the right decision that's in the best interest of all involved. With that, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to approve a request for a conditional use permit, application by Gregory Shaw, applicant and owner for the construction of a private pickleball court at 8 Rochambeau Drive, an approximate 1.42 acre parcel identified as tax map parcel 11-01-00-0060-B, zoned R-R-S, single-family residence. I would also like to include a modification to condition eight, as was considered by the planning commission during their reconsideration. The addition to that, the modification to number eight, will be the inserting of a minimum of seven needlepoint holly trees. I would also like to include two new additions that was set forth tonight by Mayor Hux. That would be number nine, condition would be the hours of use for the pickleball court shall be limited to between 8 a.m. and 8 p.m. daily. Number 10... Number 10, condition would be this conditional use permit shall be limited to the construction of a pickleball court and associated lighting, but shall not include the construction of an observation deck.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, number seven does not match verbatim, does it need to? It says, "Per the applicant, he will paint the court's surface a color that best blends into the surrounding area," whereas the conditions tonight say grass, green.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeanie. Yes, condition seven should be included. The court will be painted green grass with minimal contrast resembling grass from a distance. Thank you, Jeanie.
Thank you.
So in summary, the total on the 10 items on the mayor's discussion sheet that was handed out tonight?
Yes. Yes, sir. Everybody clear on, on that, what we're voting on?
Yep.
Okay? Mr. Moore, we good? Everything in order, okay? Randy? Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Southall. Christie, call for vote, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
No.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Thank you, Christie.
Moving on to item two, under new business, we have an ordinance to amend chapter 58, canvassers and solicitors of the City of Pecosin Code of Ordinances. And we have with us our assistant city manager, Ms. Tanya O'Connell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
On behalf of Joe Conneria, he says his apologies. I think he's called on the label. He's not here, so he was unable to attend tonight, and if he does, he should extend his apologies and apologize for that. But tonight, we bring back to you the ordinance to amend chapter 58. If you recall, we've had robust discussion as it relates to boys and peddler, or the solicitor, boys and cancer. So what we have done here is we talked about I.T. points, the peddler had been ordered from chapter 58, because chapter 74 properly identifies order to be done by a peddler, I.D., I.D. patrol, someone selling me out of trucks, so that chapter properly identified was to be known. But chapter 58 also identifies that the commission on revenue will be fee.
Can I say how much I love our I.T. people currently right now? Does sound better, so let me, for the audience at home that may not have heard me, I talked about five key things that we're changing with this. First, peddlers are being removed because chapter 74 identifies the peddlers. We also identify the commissioner of the revenue as the key contact. We identify the timeframe in which solicitors and canvassers are able to go out. We've also required that they have their permit on them, no longer saying that they have it, they must be displayed on them for people to ask the question. As well as, we broke out, there was a lot of confusion as it relates to the fee associated with not-for-profit, so we broke that out in this chapter, make it easier to read. So with that, I'm available for any questions or concerns.
Is there any real difference between door-to-door and one place of human habitation to another? Because we do use both phrases, don't we?
No.
Okay. And the only one, real question I had was, we talk about the door-to-door or whatever, if some fellow's playing a guitar on the street corner with a little bucket out there saying, you know, "Please donate" or something like that, he's not traveling at all.
It's still, it's prohibited, that is not a prohibited, with any limits that you go to city to city, you're not allowed to solicitate or even try to ask for money, they call that somewhat of enticement, so you've asked them to not provide funding to them, in fact, to contact the police department, the non-emergency, so that way they can give them guidance of where they can seek help from.
Reason I ask is because I know that a civic club in town stands usually in front of Food Lion in pretty much the same situation.
But that's a civic.
I know that, but as far as requiring a permit.
Right.
But as far as being able to do it, as, it is on Friday during the day. Okay, that's it.
I have, so clarification on the exemptions. So as we talked last time, civic organizations, nonprofits, political canvassers are exempted unless the organization pays for a service, a fundraising organization service for them, a professional to go door-to-door, then they need to get the permit.
Correct. If you think about it, if you think about the online GoFundMe, so if a not-for-profit were to entice GoFundMe to come door-to-door, they would have to actually get a permit.
Thank you. One more, one more question. Are we, if, if this passes, will there be notification from the city out about these new regulations, the timeframe and everything for solicitors?
Absolutely.
Would it be possible to include an image of what the permit looks like?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's good, Angie, thank you. Anything else from council members? Tanya?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, well done. Do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance to amend chapter 58, canvassers and solicitors of the City of Pecosin Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven is your.
Thank you, Christie. Moving on to new business, we have before us tonight a resolution of the City of Pecosin City Council approving of the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Purdue, certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family, and directing the city manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement.
We have one of multiple opioid settlements that have been going on, state of Virginia through the attorney general's office participates in these, and this is either the fifth or sixth one we've been involved in. Each one requires us to pass a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the documents, to join in the settlement. Either that, or if you don't join in, you can then only proceed on your own as a separate proceeding. The attorney general has issued any number of pleas for all the local governments to participate, because the greater the participation, the greater the percentage of pay that the state would get. So in other words, if we get 100% of the locality is participating, then that enhances the percentage of settlement that the state would get, which ultimately comes down to the city. And we have approved all of the prior ones, I see no reason not to approve this, we're not going to proceed on our own in litigation. The one thing about all of these, they, the funds have to be used normally for specific purposes, and they have to be used for education and other programs that are generally approved by the, so Tanya has been hitting that up, and participated, I think successfully, and I would recommend that we adopt it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions or comments from Mr. Moore from council members? Do we have a motion and a second, please?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution of the City of Pecosin City Council approving of the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Purdue, certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family, and directing the city manager to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Christie. Moving on to item two, under new business, we have before us an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pecosin by adopting new speed limit restriction on Victory Boulevard. And we have with us tonight our city professional engineer, Sean Crawford, who's going to give us a presentation. Sean, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. So at the conclusion of the installation of the traffic signal that's located at Legacy and Victory Boulevard, we, the city got with a consultant, I worked directly with them, and we did a speed limit study on that corridor from the city line to City Hall Avenue, where it changes over to 35 miles per hour going to With Creek. Here's a snapshot of the speed corridor, you have the main entrance to, to Legacy there to the right, and the secondary entrance to the left. To begin the speed study, data was collected by a speed collector, which is shown where it says speed count, they basically just mount a, a counting device onto a pole, it also tells the speed of the vehicles traveling both eastbound and westbound, as well as how many vehicles per day. It was found that the mean speed, so the average speed along the section of roadway, was just under 45 miles per hour in the eastbound direction, and 46 miles per hour in the westbound direction, and we have about 13,500 vehicles per day traveling along the corridor. It's pretty split in each direction, surprisingly, a little bit more skewed going back into So here we have the new area that would, if passed tonight, where the speed limit would be imposed and changed and posted. This would be the city line coming into Down Victory, heading into Pecosin eastbound, to City Hall Avenue, where back in 2021, we implemented the 35 mile per hour change from the City Hall Avenue to With Creek Road, so both directions. And here we have a, a basic layout of where the new signage would be, if passed. Our Public Works Department would be installing the, the new posted speed limit signs. With the change, the, we would add a 55 mile per hour sign towards the city line as you would go into York County, because it does change to 55 miles per hour there. And just to add, you know, this reduction, it better aligns with the surrounding area as it's built up a little bit more urban, having a transition zone from 55 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour, rather than just having that jump from 55 to 35 miles per hour, especially since we do have a new functioning traffic signal at the intersection of Victory and Legacy. So believe all, you have a copy of the speed study that was done by the consultant, I've looked it over thoroughly, I agree and am in line with, with all the summaries and the recommendations, so I stand before you with a recommendation to approve this, this ordinance to change the speed limit from the city line to City Hall Avenue, posted 45 miles per hour, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Thank you.
I have a question, please.
Sure.
We have the new satellite equipment that the police department uses to monitor speed and I think count vehicles as well, is that correct? Was that, were the numbers compared?
We did not utilize them for this particular instance, but I do have the VDOT numbers available to me, and the vehicles per day is consistent with what the, the VDOT count is on our roadway currently.
And in the graph, or not graph, in the, in the picture, inside Legacy, you have a 45 and a 35. Can you reference, does that mean that it's, you've got a 45 mile an hour speed limit going around the curve?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'd love to, to explain that. So that's, so if you're heading westbound out towards York County?
On Victory.
On Victory, yes, ma'am.
Not inside Legacy?
Not inside. That, that sign actually has an arrow pointing, I guess it's a lot harder to see up here, but there's an arrow pointing to where it would be at, which is approximately around the second entrance.
That makes it way clearer.
Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't realize it was that ineligible up here. The 35 is in line with these. So yes, it's not on top of Legacy, it's on Victory.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Randy?
I just, for the public primarily, just want to point out that the council has a corrected resolution at its place, which correctly shows the speed limits for Brown's Neck Cedar Road and Hudgens at 25. This draft was modeled on an older resolution that hadn't captured that, I apologize for that, but to clear up any misunderstanding prior to your vote, I just wanted to footnote the fact that we are not, by this action, changing any other speed limits other than the Victory Boulevard ones.
Yes, that's correct, that, that's my fault, I apologize on that table for not getting updated when I'm there.
Any other questions or comments for Sean?
I guess one comment in general is that, I think the data shows that that really is a transition area because of that 20 mile per hour either increase or decrease. I think that, you know, it just shows that that's naturally a transition area, so I think this makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Angie.
Yes, the, the new traffic signal also greatly adds to, you know, the slowing down, which we naturally do even with a, with a green light as we, we approach.
Sean, well done, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pecosin by adopting new speed limit restrictions on Victory Boulevard.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Item three, under new business, is a resolution making an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, name of Micah Miller.
Second.
Give actual reappointment for him.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Christie?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting? Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Item four, under new business, is a resolution making an appointment to the school board, and before I ask for a motion and a second, I'd like to thank all six applicants that we had for this position. We had six good interviews, appreciate people's interest and their willingness to step up and take on the burdens and responsibilities of leadership. So thank you very much to all six applicants that we have. So with that, do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution making appointment to the school board with the name of Caitlin Osborne, who's been waiting patiently for the last hour and a half.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Christie?
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Christie, and just like to congratulate our newest school board member, Ms. Caitlin Osborne, and that will become official once she is sworn in and takes the oath of office and is seated as a school board member right here at the dais. So thank you, Ms. Osborne, for your willingness to serve your school system and our community. And thank you for being with us tonight, well. That completes our new business, and we'll move on to item I, comment- That completes our new business, and we'll move on to item I, comments of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only two items tonight, and they both relate to sidewalks. The city engineer has completed the review of the consultant's work on the Upper Pecoson Rightaway survey, and we look forward to presenting that to you in a work session tentatively scheduled for the first meeting in September. It'll be longer, there'll be more properties than the one we had, similar one we had in June, so we're planning for an hour at that meeting. I don't think we'll have to move it, so that's almost in ink. And the other thing is to let you know that Sean is in the process of finalizing the design documents for the design work for the portion of the Little Florida sidewalk that gave the go-ahead to move to design in July. And hopefully by the end of the month, we'll be through the contracting phase and into the design phase. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Randy. That's great progress, so thank you to all staff. Thank you to Sean and everybody for their contributions, contributing to the progress we have made so far this year. I'm very pleased with where we are in relation to where we started just a few months ago. And we'll move on to item J, council directives. And I know that Councilwoman Emmett has some exciting information to share with us related to the school system, so Angie, I'd like to call on you.
All right. Well, I just wanted to share that last Tuesday, the Kiwanis Club welcomed 25 new educators, new teachers, including a principal. They do their annual welcome breakfast. And I just wanted to share with everyone at home or in the audience that I've been attending these breakfasts for a number of years, and this was by far the most experienced group of teachers that I have seen coming into our school system. Many of them were coming with 10 years, 15 years of experience. Some of them were coming back to the school system after having left for a number of years. We had experienced educators coming from surrounding municipalities. And I had the opportunity to speak with some of them, and there was kind of an overarching comment that the new pay scale was really what allowed them to come, and it allowed them to come to Pecoson. They wanted to be here. That new pay scale allowed them to come here. And I just want everyone at home or listening now to know how impactful that new pay scale was and the immediate benefit that the city sees from that.
That's an excellent return on the investment. Thank you to, thank you for your comments, Angie. Thank you to all involved. Thank the good Lord that we're able to do what we did this year. No doubt.
May I add one more thing on a different topic, just something else? I don't know if it's still open, but the Pecoson Parks and Rec Advisory Board had an application out for a high school youth member. If that's still open, if you're interested, contact Gretchen with Parks and Rec. And I just, I love it so much when there's an opportunity for youth to get involved in municipal government. So I just advocate for anybody interested to do that, take advantage of the opportunity to get involved, kind of at the grassroots level with the Parks and Rec.
Thank you again, Angie. I appreciate your enthusiasm. Ms. Southall?
I'm going to keep it short tonight, but I'm going to thank everyone at home who paid attention to the city government. We did have a few visitors out here tonight personally. Thank all of you for coming out tonight. The more people who pay attention to the city government, the better off we'll all be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Southall. Mr. Freeman?
Just following up on what Councilwoman Emmett said about the teachers, we're starting the school year with one fifth grade teacher short, and that's like one out of nearly 300, and that's nearly amazing. Surrounding districts are like 85% maybe, close to 90% of teachers, and we've got hopefully 100%, you know, minus the one. And that, I can say, amazing.
Yes, sir, and thankful for it.
And that's all I got.
Well, thank you for sharing those comments that reinforce Angie's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To continue with the school system, new staff did return last week, on August 4th on Monday. They had a great week of a lot of new information, learning, and some technology information, thanks to all our technology staff who helped them. They're very busy during that week, getting a lot of new information. And today, all staff returned, believe it or not. Some has flown by and teachers returned today. All staff returned. They're very busy getting ready for the new year for the children who will be coming soon. So just be mindful, school will begin before we have our next meeting, believe it or not. The school buses will be on the road again, and just be on the lookout for them. Wish everyone a very successful school year as it is rapidly approaching. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Keith?
Yes, thank you. First one, thanks to School Resource Officer Sergeant Peter Resta Tudo and everyone that was involved with the National Night Out. We can go Tuesday, that was a lot of fun. I know for a fact the Lions Club gave out over 300 little prizes for our putt-putt and soccer kick. Just a lot of fun having the children out there kicking the ball, and I guess some people got dunked in the tank. I don't know much about that, but you can probably shed some light there. This Thursday morning, the mobile food pantry distribution at MS Baptist Church, the host group, it'll be MS Baptist Church, so that's good there. Also wanted to thank everyone for the excellent candidates we had for the open position on the school board. And the big thing after, after the, you help with the food pantry distribution, don't forget to give blood, pointing this to the people on the dais here for the blood drive. It's Thursday afternoon, or Thursday morning afternoon. And then on Friday morning, after you've recovered with the blood, there's an elected leaders opportunity at the food bank, oh, excuse me, next month, in September. I think I've had, thank you for that, because I know that Bud has been this before, Angie was in it, I remember pictures right here before. It's just a lot of fun. You don't have to pick up a whole lot of heavy boxes, you can just, basically put cans in boxes, and it really helps to thank God down there, and you get to see exactly what the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank is all about. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Keith. Janie?
So you didn't steal my thunder, but I also was going to say, no, I didn't want to steal your thunder, David, because it's the mayor's cup. But I also wrote some notes on here. One, I know that we've had a lot of meetings recently where we've had the same topic discussed over and over again. I've kind of gotten excited about seeing people who care about what's happening in their communities here and not just talking about it online. Let us know. Come, show up. You know, we have some folks who I'd like to say are Pete offenders in the audience, and I like that. And feels like, you know, our own mascots. But it's great. It's great to see people who care. And not just because they're cheerleaders, but because they care. To that end, I just get tickled every time I'm up here with the amazing questions that Angie and Keith asked. I just wanted to tell you guys that, that you guys, you read and get into, and I can see your jobs playing and your backgrounds playing into this, and the involvement that all council members have in our community, they're not, this isn't the only thing that these guys do. And they're all very deeply committed to why they're here. And it's a pleasure to serve with all y'all. That's it.
Thank you, Janie. Appreciate you making such good points. And again, I'd like to thank everybody for their patience, of whom we go to our summer schedule and just have one meeting a month. Oftentimes, that means we have longer meetings, even though we don't have quite as many. But I think that's an indication of a thriving community because we have lots of things to deal with. Thank you very much. And as always, I'd like to thank Reister Bearfoot and Jen Canello for their help with the IT services, so I appreciate that. And I think that'll conclude our council directives, and we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make one more comment.
Yes, sir.
I said I'm going to keep it short, and I'll try to do that. Sean showed us things about the speed limit, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if you noticed or not, but the speeds leaving Pecoson were around 45 miles an hour.
Yes, sir.
They were around 50 miles an hour coming back. They're just glad to get back to Pecoson.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yeah, I always feel better once I cross that city line or across the bridge. No exceptions to that. Thankful to be here. Next item on the agenda is item K, closed session pursuant to Section 2.3711A3 of the Code of Virginia from 1950 for discussion of acquisition or disposition of real property in Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia from 1950 to consult with the city attorney on specific legal matters requiring legal advice. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Kristy?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunty?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now in closed session.
Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now in closed session.[105.11]
On the agenda is reconvenement. Do we have a motion and a second for certification of the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I move we certify the closed session and that only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by paragraph 2.2-3712, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion were heard, discussed, or considered in a meeting by the public body.
Second. Thank you. Questions or comments? Christie?
Councilman Fine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
And the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Christie. Item M adjournment, do we have a motion and a second?
So.
Second. Thank you, Christie.
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fine?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Christie, we are adjourned.